Um, like to call the meeting in order, this is East Town Board of Education for May fourteenth, our regular meeting. Um, before we start, can I get a motion to add the elementary school update under item one, number s- or letter C?
So moved.
Second.
And can I get a motion to remove the audience's citizens this evening?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any conversation? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all. Excellent. Exits are located on either side of the room, you can take a right or a left and phone all the way outside. Oh, okay, great. And this evening, we have a special elementary school update, so we are going to ask Principal Peterson to come up with her proof.
Are we speaking into the mic?
That would be great, however, yeah.
We're in the mic. Hi, good evening, thank you for having us. We have our bi-monthly elementary school reps here today. We have Cordelia Eubright and Dominic De Giacomo from Mrs. Katie Hill's class, and they have prepared some thoughts they wanted to share with you about the H E S happenings.
Third graders took their smarter bouncy assessment over the last two weeks. Many of us were nervous at first, but we worked hard to do our best. Families and staff wrote positive notes of encouragement to all students, which helped us feel everyone's support.
Third graders also had their second annual disco field trip. It was planned and implemented by our P E teacher, Mr. Kelly. Helps us he- use the skills we have learned in class on a real-life disco course. Many thanks to our P T O who covered the cost of the trip, so we could go this year.
Friday, May ninth was E H E S P T O's annual basket bash fundraising event. There were more than ninety baskets, a fifty-fifty raffle, a top raffle, and a silent auction. Funds raised all go back into our school for events and activities, cultural arts programs for every grade level, appreciation for staff, and even field trips. Thank you for everyone who came out in spite of the rainy weather to support our school.
Recently, P T O has sponsored cultural arts programs for kindergarten, Horizon Wings, first grade Animal Show, second grade Pursue the Animals and Facing Challenges, and third grade. Our third grade program was about Native Americans artifacts. We worked in groups to examine an artifact and try to come up with what it might have been used for. Then the presenter gave us an information card that explained the artifact. Kindergarten has another program this week, which is focused on life cycles of different animals.
Kindergarteners took their first, took, kindergarteners took their trip to Rayo Flay Farm on Friday, May second, and first grade visited Cold Spring Farm on Thursday, May eighth. Students had a wonderful experience on both trips and connected their learning about community and animals, other school and local community. Thanks to P T O for covering the costs of these trips, so our students were able to have this real-world experience.
Students have been spending time in the E H E S garden, getting the beds ready for planting, planting, seeing the new greenhouse go up, and spending time in this learning space. Students are also connecting with a local farm with food scrap Fridays. They are learning about composting and sending scrap from lunchways once per month to the farm to support the animals. Mrs. Larry's class has been working with Mrs. Endor to get um this up and running and helping our students learn about the basics of composting.
In rural language, we are researching this as Spanish-speaking country and putting together presentations to share with their class and school. Community, we are researching the maps of the country, food, president, and currency. We get to decorate the boards with our information.
Friday, May twenty-third is get outside and play for ch- uh children's mental health. We look forward to the different activities like the dancehouse with Mr. Kelly and the elephant toothpaste with Mrs. Miller. We can't wait to see what else the teachers have uh planned for us.
We still have many exciting things still to come. Third graders will go and visit the Nathan Hillary Middle School. We are looking forward to seeing all the classrooms and where the lockers are. For social studies, we will visit the Amasada House and the Good Speed Opera House. Second grade will has, has their first-ever disc golf field trip and their trip to Macamooda State Park. Third graders will have their ice cream social event in June. Field day is Friday, June sixth. Students are looking forward to the kids um dunk tank parachute games and picnic lunch, a kid, and the kids versus staff kickball game.
What we most looking forward to next year, lockers of course, having two homeroom teachers and seeing some of our friends who are older. What will me, we miss about E H E S are teachers. This is our last board of education meeting at E H E S student reps. Thank you for the opportunity to share some of the amazing things happening at our school.
Thank you very much for the update.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for us? Sean, anything?
Uh, no questions. Great job, great job.
Jackie?
No questions. Great job. Thank you so much for coming to speak to all of us grownups. I know it's I feel scared sitting up here and I'm behind a table, so I'm just very impressed and very proud. You should be very proud of yourselves, so thank you.
Absolutely. I, I echo everyone's comments. I think it takes a lot of guts and gusto to get, get up here and do what you're doing. Um, you have represented your classes very well, so congrats for having a great year.
Yeah?
I always think that you guys do a great job, and I do think you're very brave. I, I don't like public speaking still, so uh good job, and you'll, you will like fourth grade, I, I, even though you'll miss your teachers.
I don't have anything to, to uh ask, but I think you guys did a great job, and I, thanks for your report.
Congratulations on the job, well done.
Thank you so much, and um congratulations on your graduation, fourth grade. It's been exciting.
Oh, and I guess.
Erin King?
I was gonna say about field day, I know I volunteer for the dunk tank, and I think Taya also volunteered for the dunk tank. So we will be sitting up there for you to try to.
And then there's the kids' version, which is really just the bucket, you know, the bucket.
Congratulations.
Thank you. That's uh.
That's helping.
Alright, moving right along. Uh, reporter of the board chair. I've quite a few notes. Um, we are in the midst of budget season, along with all the other towns in Connecticut. Um, last night, we had the town meeting. It was moved to referendum. Um, so that will be on Tuesday, the twenty-seventh. The polls open at six AM and close at eight PM. Um, some districts are reporting that they had success in getting their budgets passed, and many have not. Um, so let's hope that um we are successful at the first time, um, and we can go on to there. Um, attended a safety meeting this morning, all is well. I'm really excited about some progress there. Um, another thing I want to bring up is coming up in November is the elections for municipal. Um, the Board of Education several years ago started changing over from six-year terms to four-year terms. In that, there's going to be five seats that are open or up for election, um, and they will be all four years. Um, if anyone is interested, and this is a bipartisan, just general comment, if anyone is interested in running for the Board of Education, or for that matter, any board, please stop down and see the register of voters. They are um located on the other wing. They can assist you with answering any questions as far as, far as uh party affiliations or anything of that nature. If anyone is interested in running for the Board of Education, feel free to reach out um to me, and I will get you in touch with um CADE, which is Connecticut Association of Board of Education. Um, they have, so you wanna be a board member, and it's a great booklet that explains the roles of the Board of um Education, the limitations, and it's very, very helpful. Um, because we definitely wanna, you know, keep the momentum going for the, for the Board of Education. Um, attended an audit meeting this week um to review the annual um town audit and town report. Um, just a couple of little challenges and working on processes, but all is well. Um, really pleased to hear that the Board of Education looks in really good shape, so is happy for that. I wanna take a moment and thank our two reps um this evening as well. Um, this will be your last board meeting, 'cause then you'll be graduating, so um just, you know, I thank you for that, and um we're gonna be recognizing you as well on May twenty-second. Um, I have for each of you a joint letter that was sent to the governor and uh state rep and senators. The letter was from East Adam, East Hampton, and from Region thirteen in regard to funding public schools, you can pass them down. Um, public schools and the lack of funding that we get for special education, so I want you guys to get a copy of that. Um, it'll go on to say about there's a four billion um surplus from the state and four million um was allocated to cover excess costs. However, um, a lot of the small towns, we're not going to be receiving that money, and we really need that for excess costs. If anybody in the audience wants a copy of that letter, it is available in central office. Um, I also received um a couple of um letters and or, and emails. Um, some of them have to do with personnel matters, um, which the board really cannot comment on. Um, one involved a student matter that was directed up to the superintendent, and um got my monthly email from, from a parent um in regard to the run club. Um, and then earlier this evening, um, there was a email that came out that I dispersed to everybody from um Lisa Conroy. It's in regard to setup bill number six, sections five and six. And um it really has a hardship on park and rec um programs. So if you're interested in supporting, um, you know, um talking to a state rep or, you know, um legislation, you can do that on your own, through your own personal emails. Um, I wanted to do a huge shout-out to um our I T department. They have been working tirelessly on meetings. Every time I seem like I go to a town meeting and they're setting up things or, you know, meetings during the day in here, and um I don't think that they get the the acknowledgement that they, they really deserve, because they're always behind the scenes, so just shout-out to them. Um, and shout-out to the P T O, um, wow, basket bash, and then the next day, you know, they're doing a flower sale. And all of those monies go directly back into student programs, which are excellent. And last but not least, please um keep an eye on the calendar, on the website. End of the school year, there are so many activities that are coming up. And does anybody have any questions for me? On my update? Okay, we're gonna move right along. Middle school, engineering the future. Come on up. I've been looking forward to this.
Hello, I'm Mr. Badala.
Yeah, that way you guys are on camera.
Hello, I'm Mr. Badala, and this is Mrs. Thody.
Hello.
And then we have.
I'm En.
I'm Michael.
And I don't know if you guys have known, but uh I was hired three years ago uh as a computer teacher, and Mr. Peacock wanted me to revamp the computer pro- uh the computer program at our school, so we have started implementing a program called Project Lead the Way. Uh, it's, last year was the first year that we I had been trained in, you know, a couple modules, so I started using it last year. Uh, we uh got a couple grants last year for it. We've actually gotten about twenty-five thousand dollars in grants to implement the program with supplies and training fees, and uh, you know, just participation fees for the years. Uh, and since then, Mrs. Thody has jumped on board, and we are now both Project Lead the Way teachers at, and gateway teachers in the middle school. So, we've been working together to create two different tracks of Project Lead the Way courses throughout the middle school. So, we have one track that I will be teaching, uh, and this will be starting next year, actually from fourth to eighth grade. Uh, this is called the Innovation Track. In fourth grade, we have a new program called uh Inputs and Outputs, uh, all about what goes into a computer system and you know, also relates that to what goes into the human body and the outputs in the human brain, right? How the, how the system works in your body relates to a computer system. Um, fifth grade will be design and modeling, which will be hands-on building projects uh using the design uh process. Um, figuring out problems, you know, solving problems with groups. Um, sixth grade will be computer science for innovators and makers, which will be using little uh little microcomputers called microbits, and they get experience with coding, um, building using motors, different sensors, pressure and light sensors. Uh, seventh grade will be automation and robotics number one, with some new kits that we got from our grant this year. They're called Vex IQ Kits. They're plastic and more s- snapped-together kits, a little bit easier than the eighth-grade kits that we have were purchased last year. Uh, and then eighth grade, they move up to automation and robotics two, which is a continuation of robotics with different kits, more, a little bit more involved kits. And then uh Shaleen has been doing some trainings as well, and sh- this is her discovery track, uh, which she's going to be leading starting next year.
Great. Uh, first of all, I want to say thank you to Joe, because without Joe, I wouldn't be standing here with my Project Lead the Way shirt um speaking in front of you. Um, he has secured all the grants for the um, the training and for the supplies, so um, thank you to Joe for, for that. Um, so I've taken um Magic of Electrons, Green Architecture so far. Um, and Joe will be able to train me in structures and stability, because he's gonna be a lead teacher in flight and space, which will up, will fit nicely into the curriculum that I've already developed. Um, so I'll start out in fourth grade with structures, with bridges, and skyscrapers. Um, we'll move on to simple machines, and I have some stuff in my, uh, some equipment in my class where they'll get to actually uh test out the simple machines. Flight and space will be in fifth grade. Um, I have rockets, I have hot air balloons, and we're gonna be tying in the Project Lead the Way lessons into that. Um, this year currently, I am teaching Magic of Electrons to sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, 'cause that was the only one I was trained in, and none of the students had taken that. So, um, Magic of Electrons takes a deep dive into um, how electrons kind of power the modern world, and how computers uh communicate, and plays a basics, basis for uh future study in high school. Um, I'm geared up this summer to take medical detectives, um, which will give kids a taste of um getting into uh medical careers. Um, they learn how to take somebody's blood pressure. Um, there is a dissection in there, um, so that one will be uh really exciting for me, 'cause I'm actually certified in biology. Um, and then I just um finished taking a very challenging course in green architecture. Um, and uh the kids get to build their own shed, and they have to use the architectural ruler and learn how to draw things to scale. And let me tell you, I was up late at night trying to figure out how I was gonna teach all this, but I think I've got it now, so we'll be launching that next year. Um, I think the kids will all, that's kinda like the, when we were talking with the implementation specialists um with Project Lead the Way, so part of purchasing um Project Lead the Way every year, you get access to all of their experts and their curriculum writers and their implementation specialists. So Joe and I get to meet monthly with them. Um, and they said that green architecture is, they're really, tha- that's their culminate, culminating experience, so um, we put that one in eighth grade.
And the way Project Lead the Way is set up is that there's one program for K through five, which is called Launch. There's another program for six through eight, which is called Gateway, and then there's high school. So, what our plan is, um, where to next? Uh, we would like to start implementing, or at some point, implement Project Lead the Way at the elementary school level. Um, I will be able to train any teacher, uh, because I will be trained in the launch, uh, all the modules. So, for no cost at all, I would be able to train each of those teachers who wants to do these classes. Um, there's hours of, of, you know, hands-on curriculum. It prepares students for Project Lead the Way in junior high, and it encourages collaboration and problem-solving. Now, down the line, we would even like to expand it through the high school, so you have a whole track from K through twelve of Project Lead the Way classes. Um, it's, you know, it, it encourages STEM engagement. Uh, they offer college credits for some of the high school courses that you can get into. So I know that we lose a lot of kids going to vinyl and some of the tech schools, so this could be a really cool track for kids who are involved in the, you know, interested in the engineering field to really stay in district and follow that through and go all the way to college from there. Um, just, so these are just, you can kinda look at this, these are just a little, uh, just, just names of different modules that are in the Launch Program from K through twelve. So we have structures, pushes and pulls, lights and sound, properties of matter, stability, motion, waves, energy. Um, there's, you know, properties of matter, animated storytelling. There's all these different pathways that the kids can take in the younger grades. Um, and in high school, you've got, uh, on the right side, you've got Introduction to Engineering Design, Principles of Engineering, and if you, I've taken some class of some uh field trips where I go and visit schools that have these K through twelve Project Lead the Way uh tracks, and the things they're doing in high school are crazy. The inventions these kids are making, um, just ideas, like creating apps, doing all this stuff that is just, you would never think about, like, high, you know, some freshmen or senior juniors in high school doing, you know, that they are. So, I would like to invite the board members, if you guys could all just kinda turn around. I had to have some uh examples of projects. I would like to invite you guys just kinda come to this back table area over here, and I've got our guys are gonna show you a couple of things that they've been working on in school. I'm gonna start over at this side. So in our, in our sixth grade, uh, this year we're doing, we're doing design model in sixth grade. Next term, actually moving it down to fifth grade. Um, and this is one project that we've done, where they had to create a puzzle cube, right? So they had all these requirements about the puzzle cube. It had to have this many puzzle pieces. Each puzzle piece had to be made of this many uh cubes. It has to have, you know, no pe- no pieces that are the same. So, first thing they do is they use these little linking cubes to build and design their own puzzle cube. Then they assess all of the different pieces, make sure that they follow all the rules. After they're done with this, they've gotta create a key, right? And this is thinking in three D, which is a hard concept for them to get, you know, to, to really master. So they had to create their key with their puzzle cube so that it matches, and then they actually get to build their own wooden puzzle cube to take home with them as, you know, a technical. Um, this is another design and modeling. This is all about precision measurement. This is called an air skipper. Kids think it's like a paper airplane, but it's really a little hovercraft, so what this does is they have to follow this blueprint. We do this as a class. We draw on the board, we, you know, measure each individual piece, uh, and then I go around and just check them to make sure they have, and they check on each other. And in the end, they come up with this little air skipper that when, if you measure really precisely, it should skip on, on a on a nice, like, smooth floor. It even does on the carpet pretty well, but. There you go.
Wow.
Nice.
So then afterwards, we have a competition, and they like to, you know, to see who's got the fastest. Right? And then we have Michael, this is Michael over here. He's gonna explain to you, this is a seventh grade project for computer science for innovators and makers, but we're actually moving this down to sixth grade next year, so go ahead, Michael, tell them what your, what the project was.
So, we were designing, or not designing, we were coding microbits to send signals to other things. This project specifically was called uh Secrets and Safety. Secrets and Safety. So, what this is supposed to do is there's a light sensor in this box, and once the light volume gets under or over one thousand five hundred, if you, it'll start beeping, and then that'll change and start flashing. When you put it back on, it should make a smile, and it should stop beating, so.
So each, each pair of students had to design some, some device to keep something that they cherish safe, right? So this one was an Oreo. We three D printed a little Oreo in there. So, every time someone tries to open the box, I set something. And this is Emmet over here, and uh this is automation robotics, so they're tell them what your, uh, what the goal of that, of that project is. So, one of their, one of their challenges was to make the wheel, make the bot, the drag, it was called a dragster, make the dragster drive faster than the actual motor moves. So they had to figure out a way using, what do we call those things? Gear ratios, right? So they use gear ratios to figure out how to connect the gears to the motor that are gonna make the wheels spin faster than the actual motor, and how do you actually do that? So show, so show, go ahead and start the So before you put it on the floor, so take a look at, this is the motor, right? That's how fast the motor's going, or look how fast the wheel is going, right? They're going like quadruple that speed, because you use a larger gear connected to the motor, and then connect it to a tiny gear that's gonna rotate more times for every one rotation of the bigger gear, causing the wheels to spin at a faster speed. So if you want, you can put it down on the ground, maybe you can catch it. Hold on, it should speed up, I think those I think we might need a new battery, but. But you can see the spinning on the wheels, so. And that is, we're just trying to spread the, spread the, you know, excitement of Project Lead the Way to the rest of the district, and get everyone else excited about it. Uh, and see if it's a catch one, we're gonna put it out of place.
That was great.
Just giving everyone a second to get back up front. And I'm gonna start off the conversation with Dr. Tabarito first.
Good evening. So I want to thank you and congratulate you. You, we can tell the energy is contagious, because Joe's leading the way, and I was super excited to hear about our students dabbling in Project Lead the Way. When they first asked me, have you heard of it? I go, have I heard of it? Yeah, I was doing it fifteen years ago, when it first was really intense at the secondary level. And then a few years ago, they introduced K on up for all elementary, so we already have an elementary school teacher who's gonna get trained. So, so there is a commitment to build, is what I'm saying. I also would like to recognize, and I don't know if people know this, but Joe Badala is the Teacher of the Year at the middle school. And Shaleen.
Thody was a former Teacher of the Year as well.
Well, thank you. We, I was so excited that you were coming, 'cause I, I definitely want to showcase all the great things that you're doing, so thank you for being here.
Are you guys excited about your projects? Are you enjoying? Are you enjoying learning?
Yes.
Yeah, what's your favorite part of this?
For me, it's how engaging it is and how hands-on. I'm always excited for the class because I know I'm not just gonna be sitting there. I'm actually gonna be engaged in doing something that I really enjoy.
Awesome, how about you?
Uh, I like all the coding and blogs that we do. And every day we get to do something new.
That's excellent. I'm gonna start on this side, Gabe.
I have a few questions, but that's really impressive. I don't think I could do any of that now. Keep up the good work. I don't even know what you guys are gonna be doing by the time you're in high school. It's very impressive.
I think you guys are really cool, so you stay cool.
Ken?
It's really awesome. I was gonna say exactly what you just said, getting in the classroom, being hands-on. It's like, you can probably retain the information more because you're doing it yourself. And so it builds that independence, so it's awesome and I can see your enthusiasm. Thank you.
Um, I'm impressed with the fact that there's instruction happening because of dedicated teachers that actually engages kids in practical learning. I have a bunch of degrees and I went through college and all that nonsense, but a lot of people learn differently. And it's nice to see you taking care of all the kids. I look forward next year to having you come present to the, uh, Curriculum and Policy Subcommittee so we can get this stuff all appropriately approved by the board. It'll be great.
I think it's exciting. I love those projects that you're working on. I think it's great that you've gotten it down to the middle level and into the elementary level. I think that it's been a really great project that you've been building, so I'm happy to see it happening.
Ken?
Uh, with the third graders in the room, and I know we have a couple of board members of third graders coming up. The, I have to say that, uh, I'm really impressed. I have a fourth grader and his favorite classes have been STEM and computer, so it, uh, it's awesome. Very impressive.
I, I think this is wonderful. You, you can clearly see all the enthusiasm in your faces, just showing everyone what you've done. It's amazing. And I'm gonna say, you're gonna have some stiff competition once the elementary school starts this. And I'm excited to see what you're gonna do by the time you get to high school.
Jackie?
Again, thank you for being brave and showing up. Teachers are used to speaking in front of groups, students not so much. So I think it's really great that you're here. Um, I think it's really awesome that the program that you're doing does extend to K through five because the elementary school does have a STEM special class that does a lot of, uh, these things just without the electronics and computers. So I think implementing that as well and getting that down. My oldest will be in fourth grade next year, so you will get to see him as well. I'm very excited because this is one hundred percent in his wheelhouse, so thank you for presenting.
Sean?
And I'm just over the moon. I mean, I come from a manufacturing business, from engineering and all that. And, and at home being a gear ed myself, so this was just absolutely amazing. I have a few little kids in the elementary too that I try to get into this. So looks like we're, we're in good hands, obviously. So thank you so much and I'm just really, I'm just so excited to see what this brings for the kids in the future. Thank you, thank you.
And I just wanna wrap this up with, I think the entire board, um, supports, uh, Project Lead the Way and really, um, your dedication
Yeah.
to doing all of the learning and then implementing it, you know, train the trainer and now you're training everybody else and, um, the students, that, you know, I'm watching you guys and I'm like, that's why we're board members. This is what we want to accomplish. You know, the student learning and the student achievement and seeing that you guys are really learning something you want to learn about hands-on, it makes it worth it, sitting at the board table. So thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, um, next presentation is our middle school playground trails presentation.
Hi, see a little bit more of me. So I also, um, run the bike club and the outdoor club at, uh, the middle school. And, um, I think it was in twenty twenty-one that I last stood here before the Board of Education giving an update about the trails. So I figured it was time again because we've had, we've done a lot of work. So here we go. So I have lots of pictures. All of our trail names are school themed. So we've got Taco Tuesday, Principal's Office, Lunch Lady Land, Detention, Suspension, Play on Words, so. There we go. Uh, so I did that. Um, so our playground tra- trails, um, have eight to nine miles that are just on the, um, two hundred acres that we originally got approval for. We're expanding that and I'll explain that a little, a little bit. We have smooth winding paths, it's well graded. Um, it's designed to be for beginners, um, for hiking and for biking. There, the trails are only open to the public during non-school hours and we have that posted, um, everywhere on any trail, um, uh, app or website that we are getting the word out about our trails. And then we have ongoing developments in addition to the trail system that I'll go over. So this is some of the educational use of our trails. We recently got a grant, um, like, this was a little mini grant from, um, the Eight Mile River, uh, watershed to do a stream study. Uh, and we studied the macro invertebrates in the, in Buell Brook. And they, um, classified them all and they did abundances of species to assess the stream health. So look at that, where is that? He's famous in two places. And so they, they had to actually kick with their feet into the nets and, and, and bother the rocks to get the bugs to come up. And our, our stream was very healthy, so that was good. There's more pictures of them getting the samples. Uh, this was in fourth grade. We, we used the trail for a rock hunt with the kids. We're learning igneous, metamorphic, and sedimentary. We are finding that there is a lot of schist in Mudus. A lot of it, actually. So we're very metamorphic heavy here. So just a little timeline. I started, um, working on the trails in two thousand fourteen. I arrived on campus and I said, oh my gosh, we have over two hundred acres of land. And I went to go out onto the trails and the trail literally just went, it was a cross-country trail. It was maybe a, a eighth of a mile in and then back onto the driveway. I said, oh, this is a tragedy, we're gonna have to fix that. So since two thousand fourteen, um, we are, we've been expanding. Uh, we now have eight or nine miles of trails that you can hike a bike on. So, and we have expanded the trail system initially in twenty twenty-two after the approval from board, the Board of Ed towards Buell Brook, which if you're at the middle school is towards the, I always tell people that's towards the dump from, from the, that's a, a, a good, uh, car- cardinal direction right there. We got a grant from, um, NEMBA in two thousand twenty-three for further expansion of the trails. And then we got another grant last year from NEMBA, um, to get, um, further expansion and to maintain the trails as well. The exciting part about two thousand twenty-five is we have started to expand on the adjacent land to the middle school that the town has just acquired, the Promberg property. Part of the land is owned by the town and part of it is owned by the Conservation Commission. So we've been working with them too. And we just put in a really easy, uh, beginner trail that we named Pre-K. If you've never seen our trail maps, um, this is the trail maps on, um, Trail Forks. And we have, um, kind of two si- it's kind of three sides. One side goes, um, up the, up towards, um, uh, again, towards the dump. Um, we have going down the driveway and then out towards the fields, um, on the west side of the property. This, I just added this map and the new, um, the new land that we got from, uh, the, the town got, um, is in purple. So that is where we're going to be expanding the trail systems. Some of the land is gonna be, where it says to be continued for agricultural use, those will still be, um, hayfields. So we're not gonna expand onto that. And you can see where the, the middle school is and the existent, existing mountain biking trails are in yellow. So this is really exciting. Um, I saw that it's on your agenda today, so I'm just putting a pitch out for approval. Um, I applied for a grant through Safe Roots to School. We've been working with Safe Roots to School about bike and pedestrian safety. They're part of the program Vision Zero, which aims to have zero pedestrian and bike deaths in Connecticut, um, through the state DOT. So they do training in schools and give out money to help, um, help, uh, get that word out about safety to kids so that when they become adults or as their children as well, they are safe. So we, we recently got, um, word that we have five thousand dollars for our bike club program at school, which we're hoping to use to get a fleet of bikes and some helmets, uh, so that we can offer some fitness to kids on campus. Um, and these are some of our partnerships. We can, you can kind of go back on that later, I'll share the slideshow with you. And then I just thought, uh, some pictures are worth a thousand words. There's my little bike club. Those are the little guys. This was opening day a few weeks ago, um, with, I had about fifteen kids and then there were some adults that were there as well. We always do an opening day in May. Here's some trail work that we did. We had Pedro's Tool Station donate a kiosk and, uh, a place to repair your bike. And then no child left inside, people. We don't want these kids on their computer screens. We want them out enjoying the world, so, um, that was, I think is, those are both my children, I believe, when they were a little bit younger. And then, uh, this is, um, somebody that, um, participated in opening day. This is a video that I think in the sake of time, because I know you have a big agenda, we're gonna skip, I think you could. Oh, no. There you go. So next steps, um, I plan, um, a community events at the, the trails. Um, I spoke with Irene Haines and we're floating a bike rodeo on June seventh. So stay tuned for that. Uh, I'm gonna continue to get the word out to the community about the trails because it's less work for me when people use the trails for hiking and biking because then I don't have to get out there and clear them off. Um, and the environmental club really appreciates that. We're gonna continue to work closely with the East Town Conservation Commission and the New England Mountain Biking Association for any expansion or upkeep of the trail system. And I, you know, the reason why I do this is to offer outdoor opportunities for kids. You know, I stepping, uh, going back when I first got here in two thousand thirteen, stepping on that campus and having two hundred acres and nowhere to bring the kids outside. So that's what, you know, that's why I'm here and that's why I keep doing this, so that we have outdoor educational experiences, um, and the, the, the kids could be healthy.
Wow.
Thank you.
Excellent. Questions, any comments?
Go ahead.
I was just wondering, um, I had recently come across, there was an autism nature trail. And they have sensory experiences for anyone who can walk across this trail or, you know, it's, is accessible, I shouldn't say walk across, but, uh, anyone who can access the trail. I was just wondering if there are any plans to add any sensory elements to any of the trails?
Let's do it, Gabe. Let's do it. The new prop, the new property, um, right across the street from the middle school. So like, if you walked out the front door and there's a stone wall there, that's very flat and very accessible. The other parts of the property are, some parts are, what I would say are difficult for walking initially because there are some downhills, but that's very flat. So I would say that, let, let's connect it.
Definitely.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
The trails, they're all like, you said something about being mostly flat, so I don't know if I didn't hear correctly. I assume there's like different terrain throughout the nine miles.
Yes, yeah.
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 And is the biking and hiking, that's the same trail though, right?
No, it's not just one trail. No, no, it's a shared trail. Yeah, it's shared. Oh, yeah, it's, it's all shared, yeah.
Picture you showing, you said one of your kids coming across like, uh, a bridge and then a rock and a bridge.
Yeah.
It's pretty scary.
Most of get off and walk.
Okay, cuz I was gonna say.
Most of get off and walk.
I would probably just fall off, but.
Yeah, no. Most of get off and walk.
Okay.
Where is, where's the map located? Like if somebody wanted to go hiking or something.
So in the end of the presentation, there's a QR code.
Okay, is it on the website?
And then also at all the kiosks.
Oh, okay.
All the kiosks have it, but I can set, I can set it up too. We probably, we probably should put that somewhere on the town website.
Yeah.
We said it's also on Trail Forks too.
It's on Trail Forks.
Trail Forks is an app.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So Trail Forks will actually, it will have the map and then it, it will locate where you are on the trails. So you won't ever, you won't get lost.
Oh, I like that idea.
Yeah.
And, um, my other question was, there, the trails, just so the public is where they are open to the public when school is not in session.
Correct.
So during summertime or holiday times and weekends.
Correct.
Okay, perfect.
And it's just not during school hours.
Not during school hours.
Yeah. Yeah.
Correct. I just wanna make that clear. So people go out and use them and understand that it's part of the school property, if you will. So during school hours, no. So that'd be awesome. I'm really impressed. Thank you so much for all your hard work.
Thank you.
We are moving along now to our next presentation, Leader in Me presentation at the high school.
All right, this is a presentation that we are pleased to bring to you. I'm going to yield the floor to our team leader and our students who are members of the Lighthouse team. Uh, with that said, my job is to pass out their presentation. So this is Mr. Johnson, he is our teacher leader. And he's gonna run us through it, both students.
Uh, yeah, so this is, um, connected to the Lighthouse team, which is a student leadership team that we brought in this year that's connected to the Leader in Me curriculum, which is our social emotional learning curriculum that we just introduced this year. So that's, the social emotional part of this is something we do on Fridays and advisory and it's all connected to the leadership. And this is kind of a separate team, the Lighthouse team, uh, team of students where they pretty much do all the work. I know they said I'm like the teacher leader, but kind of I just provide the space and the opportunity and troubleshoot with them. And they really do all the work from the emails to the setting up the presentations, coming up with, they're gonna tell you about their plans. It's really all student-run and driven, so I try my hardest to, to say as little as possible and just let them do all of the work. And so that's what I'm gonna do right now.
Okay. Hello, everyone, and thank you for the opportunity to speak here today. We are members of our school's new Lighthouse Leadership Team and we're here to tell you a little bit about what we're all about and how we're approaching our mission to cultivate and inspire leadership within our school community.
So Leader in Me is an evidence-based, comprehensive improvement model developed in partnership with educators such as Mr. Johnson here that empowers individuals with the leadership skills they need to be life-ready such as being independent, interdependent, balanced, and being able to make a meaningful contribution in their everyday lives. So what is Lighthouse? So our Lighthouse team is composed of both students and staff split into three action groups. Each group's goals contribute to Lighthouse's overall mission, which you will soon hear about. And members in the leadership, culture, and academic, which are the three action groups, consist of students and staff, so there's like separate little groups that each staff and students kind of work together with to communicate, to complete goals that they set individually. And students lead their teams in activating these goals. Staffs are more like mentors and guides, but in the end, students are the ones that are actually doing everything, making the goals, making the plans, making everything that we do happen.
There are a lot of teachers who do this with us, but mostly the children, probably the students do it, which includes the Johnson, me, Aubrey O'Connor, Kalen, Camby, Ellie, Sori, Ella, nope, Sarah Evans, Kate Carvey, Aiden Deco Man, Olivia Scooby, Leah Scott, Jesslyn Ramos, Tyler Pollock, and Cooley Bryan.
So our mission statement was created at our first team meeting earlier this year and it is as follows. The goal of the Lighthouse Leadership Team is to guide and support the implementation of the Leader in Me program, fostering a culture of leadership, responsibility, and personal growth. Our mission is to empower students and staff to develop essential life skills, promote a positive and inclusive school environment, and cultivate a strong sense of community through the principles of leadership and effective habits.
Some of the current focuses and events that we have taken place currently in the Lighthouse team has been meeting twice a month, once with the team and then once with all action groups. From December to April, we've From December to April, we've met with our leadership coordinator three times during cold day school trips. We have created a timeline for the future in preparation for next year. And we have created and implemented the seven habits into our advisory lessons. And we've also been planning the launch assembly, which has been led by the leadership, by the Leadership Action Team.
Now, a quote by Dr. Stephen R. Covey, who's the author of Seven Highly Effective Habits of Effective People, is, "Leadership is communicating to people their worth and potential so clearly that they are inspired to do it themselves." Now, leadership is a choice, an option. Just because I'm not the captain of the soccer team doesn't mean that I can't be a leader on the soccer team. And through Lighthouse, we strive to achieve every student in our school to use their influence for the better of their school and for our community.
So the seven habits of highly effective people is to be proactive, which is accept responsibility for your actions. Begin with the end in mind. Make a plan, set goals, know what's most important to you. Put first things first. Do your most important things first. Think win-win. Stand up for your needs and wants. Be considerate of others' needs and wants. Synergize. Value people's differences and strengths. Combine thoughts and sharpen, sharpen the saw, find balance in life, and avoid burnout.
Now, the five transferable skills that you're given on every graded assignment in our school. Um, the effective communicators, they all fall under conveying clear ideas and being able to do that. Now, informed thinkers is being able to plan wisely for your future and have ideas and goals and taking action to reach them. Problem solvers is being able to recognize and read your situation. And using trial and error, be able to find the correct solution to solve that situation that you're in. Now, self-directed learner is taking action for yourself, whether that's learning a new thing and using that for yourself and for others. And synergize for responsible citizen is a cumulative effort of all the other habits. And it's the ability to work with others, teamwork, and be effective.
So for the Culture Action Team, our current activities that we have under, that we are currently undergoing is promoting clubs. We're planning to do a club there to promote inclusivity. We are planning Volunteer Day, which will be explained further on. And we are creating more career opportunities for the students of Nathan Hill Ray. Our goals is to improve inclusivity overall, create a diverse and welcoming environment, and increase participation in everything in our school.
Our mission statement as a cultural Lighthouse Team will be to create a more welcoming and inclusive environment to increase membership and diversity in our school. And we will encourage and promote participation in various clubs to, in activities to use in our school. So for Volunteer Day, as mentioned earlier, students will sign up and go to willing local businesses. And they will help earn volunteer hours by joining the workforce for the, for the duration of the school day. And this will give students an opportunity to have a hands-on experience in the workforce, to learn communication skills and teamwork skills. And to give students an opportunity to have short-term positions in different industries, which have their, which to their own likings and 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 will impact them in the long run.
Alright, so for the Academic Action Team, so we have been currently trying to encourage learning, making a goal for better grades for everyone that is involved in our school, encouraging, putting more effort into their work, and Bs are Better. So Bs are Better is a program that the freshman advisors actually made, which was so they would for a semester, let's just say, try to uh motivate their students and all the freshmen to get Bs or better. And if they did, they would get like a little goodie bag, little prize. And we heard many people, many students that were not just freshmen saying, why didn't we get that? Why don't we have that? And so hearing those just responses in everyday life, we were like, well, let's do that. If you want motivation, let's give that to you. So that is what we're striving to get right now. So our goals are to improve student achievement, promote success, and enhance study and learning skills. So our mission statement as Academic Ash- Action Team is we will encourage learners to participate in their academics with effort and hard work. We will create an environment where it is normal to want to challenge yourself academically and strategically.
So our final action team is the Leadership Action Team. And our mission statement is, as the Lighthouse Leadership Team or the Leadership Lighthouse Team, we will engage our school community to develop leadership skills and create and participate in further leadership activities. We will collaborate to establish better communication between leadership clubs and create a more united and inclusive environment where anyone can be a successful leader. So our current events are planning and activating the launch assembly, which we will hear about shortly. Uh, sharing Lighthouse's mission with the middle school noise makers team, and cultivating student interest in being leaders. For future goals, we have fostering communication and involvement between our school's clubs and sports. Decreasing stereotypes of what a typical leader looks like, which will increase students' awareness of their own ability to be a leader. And also to resolve scheduling conflicts within our school. So on June fourth is our launch assembly. So this, the goal of this assembly is to share our mission with the school and how we will impact its future. So this assembly is taking place on the senior trip day, because seniors will unfortunately not be very impacted by this program. Instead of the seniors, we are bringing in the eighth graders to really have a sense of what our school will look like in the future. So the goals of this assembly are to kickstart incoming freshman involvement and a sense of belongingness, to recruit more members to our team, and to introduce the environment where students are excited to be leaders and excited to get involved within our school community.
So we're having like a pep rally type thing in the gym during assembly to really engage students and learning about it. So each action team will be doing a different activity to like promote their action team. So the Academic Action Team will be doing a trivia game. The Leadership Action Team will do a minefield challenge. And the Culture Action Team will do an obstacle course.
Um, for our future plans, we will be creating a timeline for next year.
We're also gonna be creating wow factors in the school building and environment. So that might be like a physical, something that has a striking appearance, or it might just be improving the environment of our school.
Um, we are hoping that the launch assembly will recruit more members of this team.
And we are also hoping to be open to any feedback, especially from you that you may have. And factoring all feedback that we gain from everywhere else, so that we can continue to improve and strive towards more leadership in our school community. So thank you.
Sure, I haven't started with you.
Okay. Um, you are definitely leaders. I can definitely tell by the way you present yourself and you're very well spoken. And I recognize some of you as former noise makers. Could be wrong by recognizing your faces. So uh, congratulations. You are a, a impressive group of young, young students here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think you did a wonderful job. Such a great job, just outlining everything that you did and what your plans are. Your forward thinking. I absolutely love it. Great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jackie. Again, thank you for speaking. Very brave. Um, on top of everything, what really stood out to me is inviting the eighth graders, soon-to-be incoming freshmen, to welcome them into it before they get to start the new school year. I think that's really important and a really, really great thing. So thank you.
Thank you.
Just an amazing job. Again, just like what Kara said, I s- I see some faces off. I'm blown away by how you have so much time to also do this. You said a few times a month, and I know you guys are in. I see your faces in many other clubs and sports, so it's, it's amazing that uh, that you're bringing this and start a new program. Um, what you had mentioned, it just caught me, what you said, you just by being a captain doesn't make you, you know, the leader. There are so many other ways to be leaders. And uh, you know, by leading by example. Exactly what you're doing tonight shows that you're all leaders. Um, and uh, that was, that's a great thing right there. And then the volunteering in the community, that's, that's just sounds like such a great idea. I mean, it develops not only helping the community, helping yourself, learning like what you said, what you may or may not like in the future. Um, and uh, the relationships that'll just come about that. So, you know, I'm just so proud with everything I'm hearing. And uh, looking forward to seeing how it develops. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you guys for your presentation. It's really nice to have a full breakdown of everything you guys have done in the school year. Cause I know it just started, but you guys have done so much in the school. It's great to see your hard work being recognized. Keep up the good work.
Thanks for presenting. Keep up the good work. Thank you.
Really impressive. I love how you're bringing the students together. And it sounds like you guys have a lot of different opportunities with all the different, like I recognize your faces. You're in other clubs, you're doing other activities. So I think this is a great way to bring people together. Um, and so it's awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
What everybody else said. Great job. I do have one message for the young man up there. Get some of your buddies moving, because the girls are making you look bad.
I think this is wonderful. And like others have said, I think it's great that you're connecting the schools. This has been a longstanding board position to get the schools to sort of integrate with each other as the grades go up. So to bring the eighth graders up to the school early and show them what it's like and get them engaged, I think is really great. And I just love all the inclusivity and the opportunities for kids to get involved and the recognition that leadership does come in different sizes. So that's a really important facet to understand, because you're gonna encounter it forever.
And I'll just conclude with, you guys are so dynamic and um, I am so impressed with everything that you are doing. Keep up the great work and look forward to hearing you back here next year with more programs and more energy. Dr. Sabrina.
I I wanna thank Mr. Eckert and Mrs. Stroli. I know she's back here somewhere.
She's way back there.
Um, and all of the staff, because it's a collective effort. You're here representing the greatness that exists within the walls of the school. And so we're really excited to see it evolve and develop further. So thank you for being here this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Awesome.
Okay, I have um, next is um, the donation of Adirondack um, chairs. By naming a stone wall by the um, Haslam Foundation. And I just would like to recognize everybody here who's with the Haslam Foundation. If you will introduce everybody from that foundation.
You want me to do it?
Sure.
Um, good evening. Uh, my name is Ralph Kolik. I'm the vice president of the uh, Haslam Memorial Foundation. We have our president, Melanie Kolik, and we have our secretary, treasurer, sorry. Nancy Hess. Uh, for those who don't know, the Haslam Foundation, our memorial foundation, is a nonprofit foundation that our mission statement is to give back to the youth in and around East Tatum. Uh, the foundation was formed in twenty twenty-one in memory of Richard Haslam, who was a big, big part of East Tatum um, in the past. He was a very popular um, person. He was a constable. He was a baseball coach. You name it, he did it. He stepped up for the community. And unfortunately, upon his passing, we wanted to pick up where he left off. So we found uh, formed our foundation. And what we do is we give back to the community. Some of the um, projects that we've done, just for reference, uh, we've donated two scoreboards to the East Tatum Little League that are at the elementary school fields. We have donated a trailer to the East Tatum Boy Scout Troop. We've donated turkeys to the food pantry at Thanksgiving. We've donated to Youth and Family Surfaces. We've donated uh, new uniforms for the middle school cheerleading squad, because theirs were outdated and they needed new ones. We've donated uniforms to the high school softball field, I'm sorry, softball team for their trip down to Florida this year. We've donated to the high school soccer team for jerseys, or for uh, warm-up jerseys and backpacks. So they looked uniform, showing up to other schools. So that's what we do. And every year, we like to do a big project and give back. And the way we do this is we host a annual golf tournament. Which Patty has our new flyer. It is actually coming up in September. The registration is up now, if you're interested. Uh, it is September eighth, and it happens to be the eightieth birthday of the Haslam. So the timing couldn't be better. So with regards to this project this year, we were looking for something to do. Nobody had actually reached out to us for a big project, so we're like, we gotta, we have to do something. It's, we're not gonna skip a year. And for those who don't know, Tyler is our son. He's a freshman at the high school. He's on the soccer team. We were sitting at a game one night and we noticed, I wanna say it might have been some of the softball players that came down and were sitting along the retaining wall at the soccer field. And we said to ourselves, Melanie and I were sitting there, and we said, wouldn't it be great if we kind of created a student section at the soccer field? And we were kind of tossing around ideas and what we could do, because everyone was, we noticed a lot of parents were bringing their folding chairs down and just coming right off the parking lot, and it's right there. They were just sitting there folding chairs up. And their grandparents were there. It's, it was, it was, it kind of formed itself. We said, why don't we just throw up, do something nice and throw up a bunch of Adirondack chairs? And then that kind of started spitballing ideas. And the idea came up that, let's create a student section. Let's create, let's bring the Adirondack chairs in, and let's name it. Let's give it a name. Cause the basketball court has a student section called the Sound Pound. Um, unfortunately, I never went to East Tatum, but Melanie did, so I've heard all about it. Um, and we're like, let's give it a name. Let's make it, let's make it fun. Let's make it last. So the idea was to put up the Adirondack chairs. We're gonna probably put up about two dozen. Um, and the name kind of came in the fall. We were at a soccer game and we had just had that large earthquake in town. And the buzzword was fault line. So we ran with it. It fits the school, it fits the mascot, it fits the town, or it fits Mootus. So we're proposing um, to put up a student and family section. Doesn't necessarily have to be students, doesn't necessarily have to be families, kind of combination. Um, of chairs. Uh, I've talked with Don at length about how the town's gonna maintain them. Mow around them, secure them, so they don't unfortunately walk by chance. Um, and that is all gonna be taken care of by the foundation. Um, and we're gonna also pay for the sign and the installation of a sign on the face of the wall. So, um, the chairs will be the new composite wood, so they won't rot. Um, we're looking at the kind that fold in half now. They do that. New to me too. They fold in half, so it might be, uh, it's easier for them to store them in the off-season. We figured what, they would be out for the soccer fi- uh, for the fall season of soccer and the spring season of track and field. They can be used and, and then put away for the winter, so they last longer. And that's pretty much our proposal. I have passed out a couple arc uh, renderings of what it would look like potentially. Um, obviously pictures of the existing wall that are there and um, and a potential idea for the chair. So.
Is there any questions? I, I believe that this is already gone through business and planning. And it was your intent to bring that forward? So is there a motion to accept the donation?
I just wanna say real quick that I love incorporating the buzzwords to name it from last fall. I think that's like really unique and cool. And if Don's in, I'm in. Like, if he approves, I'm on board. So, thank you.
I do have one question, which we did discuss a little bit at the business and planning meeting, and that was storage. And before that meeting, we didn't know that they were gonna be folded.
Correct.
So we didn't land on a storage place.
We, Don and I had actually talked about it. It's, it's whether or not they want to take them off the field for the winter.
Right.
Or they can be left out. Uh, if they do get taken off, he had mentioned that they didn't think they would have the room in one of the buildings. Uh, again, this was before I realized that the newer style Adirondack chair is actually folded half. Um, we talked about maybe just putting them up alongside of one of the storage buildings and throwing a tarp over it, just to kind of keep it out of the weather for the winter. Um, if we end up going with the folding style, which is a full Adirondack, it's not the plastic kind, it's, it's the composite wood. Um, there might be potential that these things can actually be stored inside. There might be space now, because they will collapse to, I think, I believe the dimensions are on it, on the back page. They will uh, yeah, about, they're about They will, uh, yeah, about, they're about twelve inches when they're folded up, so. There is potential to keep them indoors then.
Yeah, you know, keeping this, are there any other questions? Before I ask for a motion, I just wanna thank the Haslam Foundation for all you do and um honoring Mr. Haslem is extremely special to me, he's uh, the whole Haslam family, so, thank you, and um really excited about next year's tournament being on his birthday, that's just going, that's just gonna be awesome.
Just look, it happened to work out that way.
Yeah, well, he's watching over you.
Yeah.
He really is, so with that, is there a motion to accept a donation from the Haslam Foundation for Adirondack chairs?
So moved. Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
I have one quick question. I don't golf, is there a way I can make a donation, and actually come to dinner?
Or you can make a donation and not come to dinner.
Jim, you made a donation last year.
I couldn't remember, I thought I did.
And that was perfect if you'd like to do that again.
I, I think I've just been disinvited with my mom's.
No, not at all, lots of options, yeah.
No cross-conversation, yeah, let's keep it back at floor table level. Any other, okay, there's motion and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, no, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Very exciting, that's gonna be awesome.
Alright. Name and Aaron.
Alrighty. Under the Finance and Technology Program, seniors Nikki and Ben Delisa designed and sold Forever Young Sweatshirts to Hora and East Tatum Community. Where all the proceeds went towards the Connor Young Memorial Foundation. Um, this community service project allowed students like Ben and Nikki to learn leadership and entrepreneurship skills with the intent of bringing the community together and honoring the life of a student Connor Young, which is really great.
The culinary department held a pizza with family event where culinary students and their parents and our guests worked together to cook pizzas.
On April twenty second, middle school students were able to attend the Hora Experience, where prospective students were able to see the classes, clubs. The classes, clubs, sports, and community activities offered at the high school. And in addition, the US History students were able to showcase their World War Two projects in an art gallery, highlighting their recent learning about World War, World War Two.
On April twenty fourth, sophomore students were able to attend the annual Career Expo at Wesleyan University. Where students were exposed to a variety of potential fields that they may be interested in. Many students were able to engage with people working in fields such as medicine, landscaping, engineering, technology, and more.
On April twenty sixth, the class of twenty twenty seven held their tag sale at the middle school, where community members were able to purchase and or buy event buy items at the event, and they raised a lot of money for their class, which is great.
Congratulations to Olivia Scooby, Bones, Carly Cummings, who were announced finalists for the shed writing competition. Big shout out to the additional submissions from our school, and I also was the, I also created the cover for the shed winners book.
Congratulations to Omar Lopez and Jaden Reyes for becoming the recipients of the twenty twenty five Bo Tarde and Mike Savage Teammate Award for their leadership and impact to our unified sports program, they were awarded at the Aqua Turf with their families.
On April thirtieth, seniors were able to showcase their senior capstone project to the community, highlighting their passions and career plans. Congratulations to all of the seniors who have finished their project, from those aspiring to be in the medical field, automotive field, history field, and everything in between.
Yesterday, May thirteenth, was softball senior night, where players Mackenzie Albert, Jackie Getz, and Kate Turnavsky, as well as the manager Autumn Smith, were celebrated, and the noises took down Glastonbury with an impressive eight to one score. Which brings their overall record for the season to thirteen wins and three losses, so they're on a roll, and this Friday they take on Coventry.
Last Wednesday, basketball senior, oh, baseball seniors Aiden Brown and Sevy Sugar were celebrated at their senior night against Old Saybrook. The baseball team currently sits at a record of two wins and twelve losses.
On Sunday, May fourth, seniors Gabe Nolan and Mackenzie Albert were recognized at the C I C's annual Scholar-Athlete Banquet at the Aqua Turf for their achievements both academically and athletically.
On May twenty fourth?
On May first, the entire school gathered around the courtyard to, for the announcement of the class of twenty twenty five's valedictorian and salutatorian. And our valedictorians Nicole Wang and our salutatorian is Erin Munievo. And now they have the pleasure of writing speeches for graduation.
Oh, thank you.
I just wanna thank both of you for being active representatives for the school, I've really enjoyed having you both here, and I think um you guys contribute a lot, you know, so um, just thrilled with the way that this is going, and I spoke to Mr. Eckert today about continuing on the program and and you know, and um, getting you guys engaged at the level and at the table, so, you know, thank you very, very much. And thank?
Thank you and congratulations, um, the, the Career Expo was just awesome, this is my second year going, and I'm just like, get really excited. Because you guys just have done so many great things, thank you for being representatives here. It brings an energy to our board meetings, and it's really nice to hear straight from you what's going on at school, like, there's really nothing like it, so thank you and congratulations.
Great job, um, it was particularly, and it, and this is not the first time, it's particularly gratifying to me when I hear you folks saying nice things to your younger colleagues who are recording. That's not always typical of high school students, and it's nice to see you being atypical, thank you.
Thanks for both of you for being with us for the season here, and uh, I hope that you both have good luck in your futures, congratulations on your salutatorian.
Thank you for uh, spending the school year with us, and uh, you are busy, especially of your salutatorian, that's, that's a hats off, it's awesome, so congratulations to both of you on your graduation.
I echo everything everyone said, congratulations Erin, great job, and Gabe, the both of you have just represented your class so well, and um it's been a pleasure having both of you here.
Jackie? Yeah, kudos, you made it, almost, close, thank you for uh, taking even more time out of your very, very busy uh, life to continuously give us the updates on high school, it's for me really important to hear through the students' voices, what the students are up to, not just an adult telling us, so, it means a lot, thank you.
A- absolutely, I mean, for coming here and showing up every month and staying some late nights with us, you know, that's very commendable. Especially with your busy lives and s- sports and schedules and, and uh, your celebration of what you're doing, so I appreciate the updates, you've had fantastic updates all season. And like Taya said at the Career Expo, I saw, saw your booth and, you know, guys working hard, and I know you'd be on that Lighthouse team because you are definitely a couple leaders yourselves, so, um, you know, thank you again, and good luck to you in your future endeavors.
Thank you.
Thank you, okay, is there an action um, on the minutes, a motion to approve the regular minutes of April nine?
Yes, the question, cause I speaking for myself, was kind of confused about the vote when we first started, I wasn't sure, I thought I made assumptions, I wasn't sure, um, we're not doing the obvious of citizens.
That is correct, we moved that, we took that off, we have eighty-nine page.
Okay, that's fine, I just, just wanna say for the record that I didn't vote yes on that, just, I, I
Oh, you voted yes and you didn't vote no, okay.
Okay, yeah, I just, it was going really quick, didn't, I missed it, so.
Alright, um, is there a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of April nine?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion?
I have a couple corrections.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, at the top, it says special meeting, it was a regular meeting.
For April nine?
Yep.
Top left.
Okay. Let me make that correction.
The first motion, my name is spelled wrong, but I don't really care, just, just for the record. And then at the end, to the consent agenda, uh second, I don't remember who the second person was, Terry had an emergency, so she had to leave, so it wasn't Terry. Where are you looking? The last motion, oh, the second to last motion.
On April nine?
Yep, well, it says to approve the consent agenda, I was one through ten.
Yeah, I see, okay.
Yeah, I wasn't there for that one.
You weren't there, okay, I must, I'll have that in my notes.
Is it making um, her copy?
Yeah.
Is there a motion to approve the April ninth minutes as um, amended?
So moved, second.
Any further conversation? All those in favor?
Aye.
Is there a motion to approve the special meeting minutes of April twenty third?
So moved.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, report of the superintendent, Dr. Sabrina.
Good evening, um a lot to share, I want to
Okay, just hold, hold on one second, are you guys all set? Did you need a correction?
Um, I just, little details, so the one we just voted on, all of the in absent two, absent one? Was somebody absent for the adjournment? That's for this.
I had a minute, one second, I left at eight.
The special meeting is
I one minute, I wore it all for one minute.
Yeah, right, okay.
Alright, thank you, I just, we were looking at the numbers, so I was just looking at the numbers, that's right.
That's right.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair, um, want to also recognize um, Shailene Thodey because the noise makers last year won the Vision Zero Program Distinction Award. If you recall, for their work with the Connecticut Department of Transportation and exposure to safety and bike riding. So that didn't come up while we were talking right after presentation, so I, I wanted to recognize that. And in addition, we got word that the high school is gonna be receiving their five thousand dollars um, coming, so we don't have that yet, so stay tuned for that, so they can get some bikes and helmets and um, do great things and appreciate Ms. Thodey's work in spreading the love across the schools. Um, okay, want to recognize three students who were at the dinner last night, the Ray School Corporation Scholarship Dinner. Um, congratulations to Erin Allen, Nicole Sikorsky, and Chloe Door. Um, it was a lovely evening, um, and we're really lucky to have um, the support of the Ray School Corporation. Wanna also acknowledge on April thirty, there was a surprise lunch um, hosted by students at the high school for senior citizens. And um, it was an amazing event, and the senior citizens actually stood up and gave a standing ovation to all the students, like, we wanna see all the students, they came out, um, and it was, it was fantastic, um and by our culinary arts teacher, Fozada as well, so, it was outstanding, so I think we gotta continue this, you know, tradition of a surprise event for our senior citizens. Um, PTO rocks, I went to the Basket Bash, and you really could take that on the road, you can go to the Excel Center and fill it up because it was amazing, on Friday night, it was pouring rain, parking lot was full, blind out the door. It was out, it was really outstanding, um, and so the parents, the community really came together, um, and donated so much and the kids and the families had a fantastic time, um, thoroughly impressed and really joyful to be there. Um, want to thank um, our students and staff for enduring the standardized testing um, era at this time, every year in the spring, they have to take, they start off with the SAT, for eleventh graders, they have to take the NGSS. Then um, grades three through eight have to take smarter balanced English Language Arts and Math. Um, and fifth and eighth have to also take the NGSS, and that's in addition to high school AP tests that, you know, kids also take, so it's really a very busy time and um, want to thank everyone for their patience and endurance, um, to stick through all of that. This past week was teacher appreciation, um, week, I'll call it week, because parents and the community come out and they celebrate and, and pamper and do all kinds of fun things, um, with lots of amazing food. Um, so really wanna, we recognize the teachers, but wanna appreciate the work of everybody, they show appreciation throughout the year for other staff members as well, um, cause you know there's a national day for everybody, which is great, no one's left out, so wanna thank um, the parents and the community for assisting with those celebrations. Um, wanna also thank the Haslam Foundation, I know that they are not here right now, but they continue to support the community, support the school um, system, and it's fantastic, I did go to their fundraising event, and I already put September eighth on my calendar. Um, so really appreciate everything that they do for the community. Um, continuing a little bit about Project Lead the Way, you, you saw the presentation um, earlier, uh one thing about this program, it is aligned to NGSS standards, beginning in kindergarten all the way through. And students in high school, they just take the course with an assessment, and it is an automatic credit um, for college, so I, I know that firsthand experience with WPI. So it's definitely an industry standard um, program, and I'm really excited to be a part of growing the program. And, that's it for me right now.
Oh, wow.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm, I'm thrilled to hear about the um, the Ray Ford scholarships, they're gonna give out three scholarships and do the dinner, and they invite, you know, you guys to go, I'm sorry, I missed it this year, it's the first time in a long time I missed it, and
It's amazing.
Yeah, they, they just do so much, and then um, same with the Haslam Foundation and everything too. So, any open round in regard to superintendent?
I just wanted to, quick positive note, um, getting back to the testing, um, speaking for myself as a parent who has a third grader doing that testing for the first time, I know I bring lots of anxious feelings, um, I was really grateful to have been reached out to, I think all third grade parents were reached out to uh, weeks before testing started, saying if you would like to send in words of affirmation and notes for your third grade student. The teachers of each classroom would hand them out before each day of testing to have words of encouragement from their grownups for them. And as a parent, that just meant a lot, um, to know that we were able to be a voice in the moment right before the testing started, so, wanted to say that was really great, and thank you for, um, everybody that made that happen.
Thank you.
Yeah, just to bounce off of what you said, not only did we as parents get to write notes, but also teachers, staff, like we got a kindergarten teacher, no, another staff member, it's just like coming home with a folder full of positive affirmations when it can be really stressful. And also, something that I heard from one of the teachers that just really impacted me was, she said to the students, um this test is a reflection of how well I'm teaching you, and this is not on you, and it was just like, it was honestly very heartwarming. So, thank you for everything that you do and all the stuff at the school. Excellent, anything else? Okay.
Let's move on to policy and instructions, see, see that you've been relatively busy there, I don't know what to talk about.
I, I have a um, very dedicated group of people that tolerate to be driving them like a nut, um, which is fortunate. We met on May first, and you're, we've got lots of policy stuff um, for tonight. Uh, some of it'll be a second read and be done assumingly, and then there's a bunch of stuff for the first read. Um, we are trying, we're driving to two different goals at the same time. One is to update curriculum uh, policies, because One is to update curriculum uh policies because they haven't been handled. Uh, in a timely fashion. Last several years. Um, the other is a selection of um other policies that Dr. DeBrito. Was kind enough to hand off to me and say, here, go deal with these. Um, so we're kinda working at both. We will be meeting again this month on the twenty ninth. I am very grateful that we agreed to do that. We will also be meeting at some point in July, which is not always typical. But again, we're trying to get a lot of stuff done and they're they're very cooperative, very hardworking. I don't have a lot more to say. Um, if anybody has any specific questions regarding the policies, uh, I can try and answer them for you as we get to things. Um, I do wanna mention, uh, we've gone through a bit of a shift in how we're um processing them. And uh. I have begun sharing everything with all the board members before we actually meet. So they get at least a look at it, cause it's hard to get things to them in a timely fashion, sometimes otherwise. Uh, this month, policies you got were. Here's the completed version in normal white type and here's the original version. And they weren't marked up because you already had the marked up stuff weeks ago. If that doesn't work, if you want me to do something differently, just speak to me later and we'll see what we can work out. Other than that, thank you very much.
How are we doing with um? Getting updated on all the policies, like are you a quarter of the way through? Like where are we at and I'm not rushing you?
We have been. By the end of uh tonight.
Yeah.
Um, we will have approved probably um upwards of fifty five policy changes since we took over. Um, that's pretty radical, that's a lot of work.
It is a lot of work.
Um, so I'm not gonna even try and tell you what that is for an overall percentage. Um, it's a lot of work and we're moving as quick as we can. I mean, we're bringing four or five policies and clearing through them each meeting.
I I'm not, I'm not criticizing, I guess that is just like.
No, no, I know, I just don't have a good answer for you.
It it is, it's a challenge when you have an eighty nine page packet, you know, to go through. So I give you guys a lot of credit and um.
Well, that's why I started.
I really kinda rest upon what. You guys are doing in your committee and make sure that it's all set.
Ryo and I work pretty closely in front of personnel too.
Yeah.
Um, but that's also why I started sharing things with people earlier on. Uh, just because I figured people need some time. Even if there's some changes before the final version, better off um to have a look at what's coming. Than to say, here it is, um, you've got five minutes, read it and tell us what you think. That's not workable.
The committee's very thorough.
Oh yeah.
They go through every word, no word was unchecked.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um, and if we.
Yeah, yeah, where we're.
And if we have to slow it down. That's the right thing to do, we do slow it down and then come back. So, we definitely are expeditious and efficient and thoughtful.
Any questions for policy?
Yes. I actually was recently approached by the sustainable sustainability committee chair. Um, asking the Board of Ed to make an equity statement, which may involve some policy. So I made a copy of the of a packet of information. I know the board is not gonna discuss it today, but I'm hopeful that we can move it to the June agenda. And I was gonna give a copy to each member so that they could have a chance to sort of get their head wrapped around it prior to. And the policy questions that are in here would be to the policy committee.
I uh Laurel was kind enough to give me a heads up that this was coming. And I looked, uh, we just updated the relevant policy a couple of months ago. So, we almost certainly do not need to do any policy work. The board may choose to make a separate equity statement, which that's fine, you know.
Okay.
There's no, there's uh no harm in doing that. But I don't think it's gonna have any policy implications, since we just did it in April.
Okay.
The board had a.
So, we are, we are absolutely up to date on all of this, we are covered.
Yeah. Okay.
And a lot of their certification includes things at our schools. I'm happy to read through it and go through it like Jim mentioned, but.
Actually, you know what?
We're not behind on this.
Absolutely not. This is kind of.
So, what we.
We keep sort of organizing.
So, what we need, Laurel or what you need for this grant? Is a um an equity statement from the board or do you need the policy?
No, so they're attached to the packet, it are four equity statements that came from four other school districts. Two of the school districts chose to cite policy and then write their statement in conjunction with. Two only wrote statements but didn't involve policy.
Okay.
So there's an option. And one of the things that I've written about in here is that I'm willing to draft. Uh, an example statement based off of the information that we've got in this packet, which you'll see. That then board can review and decide if it's something that they feel. S- to support and move forward.
What I would recommend is they, everybody has this packet, policies meeting. Have policy page, post attention to the last two pages, which are your examples, correct?
Well, no, there's there's many examples, there's four examples, so they go back probably six or eight pages of these statements from these other districts.
Okay, so. Okay. I would like you guys to go look which one aligns closest to our current policy and make a recommendation to the board in June.
Alright, and and I I think.
Or at this deadline.
Just. She's volunteered to to give us a little leadership.
Yeah.
I think we ought to listen to what uh Laurel says as part of that. And if you want, you and I can sit down and go through what you come up with, not that I need to, but I'm saying offer help.
Yeah.
Um, and then we can kinda look at it. We probably will not get it to it on the on the twenty ninth, but we could do it in the June meeting.
Yeah.
So the reason that I'm asking for this out out of sequence here is that there's a little bit of an expedition issue. The the sustainability piece of this equation has a deadline of August nineteenth. That the statement needs to be submitted in order to achieve the next level of achievement within the sustainability objective. And that would be the gold standard, which is meeting all twelve of the criteria in all the different elements. So these schools are involved in this. So the deadline around this is what's kind of forcing my hand, given that I've just recently received this information. And the timing that it takes us to do a process, so it goes to policy, policy reviews it, it comes to the board for a first read, it goes back.
And that's we have to go.
But.
I understand that, but I was trying to sort of like.
That's why she reached out to me.
Working within that elasticity, I wanted to make sure we have enough meetings on our scheduled agenda to meet there.
And that's.
We don't need, we, we're not writing a policy, we're writing a statement.
Right.
So, all it has to do is come to the board, ask his statement, and we approve a statement. So we're not approving a board doesn't have a first read and a second read.
Wonderful, so I will.
So, what I'm asking.
Yeah, that's why I need the effort to look the policy up.
Right, so what I'm asking, and I think so we stay in the norm, is you guys can talk.
Okay.
But you have all these examples, you don't have to recreate a meal here. You know, you have all of these that you might find one that aligns very well. You tweak a few words and then you make a recommendation.
We should land a couple of them together.
I just wanted to point out that this is an ask from an organization for us to do more work for their certification.
Exactly.
While I, you know, I support sustainability and everything in our town to bring in sustainability. I work with their organization through the school, through the town, all of that. I don't want to run the risk of us racing to reach their deadline. When this could have been brought up earlier and this is not our our our.
What I can do is I can write a statement and bring it to the June meeting. I was trying to send this to the correct policy, you know, and. Uh, because realistically, policy, and you know everything that's in these policies.
Right.
So, I as a board chair, I can just write one and bring him in June if you you think it's gonna be too much.
I don't, I don't think it's a big deal, I think Laurel or I could work on something.
But we're we're certifying, we're certi- this is to certify the town, this is not like a school certification.
No, they need, they need a statement from the Board of Education.
I know what they need, they they used uh part of their silver certification last year was Pollinator Gardens at our schools already.
Just right. So, we we do support them, but I'm just trying to make the point that they have a deadline.
We don't need to add even more to what we're trying to accomplish if we can't do it. And that's not.
I.
A negative.
I I I don't, I don't.
I I.
I would just write a statement and bring it in in June then, if we feel it's gonna be too much.
Okay.
I I don't think it's a big deal.
I don't think it's to be complicated.
Um, Jackie, I I agree that someone else's lack of planning does not create an emergency for us.
Right.
On the other hand, if we can accommodate it easily enough, I don't see why we wouldn't. And we just updated the relevant policy by happenstance, so the work is pretty minimal. Um. You and I could work on something, let let the board chair know what's going on, I'll keep you guys in the loop as I always do.
Right, yes.
Is that acceptable?
Yeah, yeah, that's fine, I mean, I, again, I fully support the sustain sustainability organization. In making our community, both school community and district town as sustainable as possible. I just. My initial like body reaction to getting this was this needs to be done and we need to do it, but like. It doesn't have, it's not that.
I think the statements are pretty, are not that. Difficult, you know, because yeah, it's just, they're really not.
A lot of it is already in our language, so we're not reaching out into the ether trying to build something.
It's where uh.
It's just pulling some. I just, I don't want yous doing the work, that's not this, and you doing the work, that's not the, you not doing the work, that's not this.
And I appreciate where you're taking from, yeah.
I had you saying. Right, so, we'll figure it out, we have June meeting and then um. We can always call a special meeting and if it's just to.
And also the August meeting will be, will be before the deadline too, so we're we're okay.
It's points, right.
Before the deadline.
Yeah. Okay. Alright. Business and planning.
We met last Tuesday, May sixth, we talked about uh maintenance stuff. The elementary age back project is underway, that switch here is delayed, so we're probably not gonna make it to December thirty first state deadline. But, um, I guess a lot of schools aren't, so there's a meeting waiver available. Uh, we went over the Haslam uh foundation donation, which we talked about tonight. We went over food services, which. Discussed tonight too, um. Don't wanna discuss that, cause I didn't realize we're like not on each other tonight.
Mm-hmm, discussed under your everything.
Yeah, okay. And then uh contracted with a grant writer for a security grant. And that would be really amazing with our tight budget, so uh. Details cost of that. Um. In regards to the food services, we discussed how like. How to, we need to increase our amounts of breakfast and lunches served. And uh. We decided as a committee that we're gonna keep the price the same. From the twenty five, twenty six school year, because we thought if we raised it, it might further uh. You know, decrease amount of people that want to. And um, we also talked about, if anyone's listening to that, the business manager is the only person that sees the free reduced lunches. So if you think you're eligible, you should apply for it.
Do we need a motion to set the charges?
No, we don't need a motion, cause we're gonna keep it at the same rate the same.
Is it gonna change the same? Thought we had do it every year.
No change.
Sir, motion on um to keep the food charges the same for the twenty five, twenty six school year?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Can I just provide a little bit more than what you shared?
Sure, oh yeah, go for it.
So we're seeing a decrease in breakfasts and lunches purchased.
Yeah.
Around, since we got around a decrease in breakfast and lunch purchase.
Okay.
Yeah.
We are, we had a discussion and decided to keep the price of the meals the same because of other increasing costs. We're not sure exactly why the number of breakfasts and lunches have decreased. However, we did have free breakfasts and lunches during COVID and then we had free breakfast after that. That could be a reason. We also had some discussion around the content of the food, which I think is gonna be an ongoing discussion, probably not tonight, right? But an ongoing discussion that we need to have about that, because some of us had concerns about, you know, what what are the lunches? There's specific nutritional values that need to be within the lunches and packaged foods can provide that specifically. Because you can actually measure. In the past, I'm sure most of us remember our our lunch, ladies lunch people were making lunches from scratch or they were served on trays. Now everything's throwaway, we're wasting a lot and the food is not as nutritious because we have to have those measured values. But just for the public to understand that it's an ongoing conversation that we're having, we do wanna keep the pricing the same. So that we can make breakfast and lunch as accessible as possible, because no matter what, the students need to eat. And we're just hoping that the nutritional value can increase over time.
Perfect.
And I think we'd be all ears, any board members or any uh public person that would like to email and how, like, what would it take? I guess, to buy like breakfast or lunch or we have to advertise, advertise, I don't mean paid advertising, I mean like.
Okay, right.
To remind people on Parrot Square, like it's available, how much is it, how to use like the uh mic payments clause. With all that stuff, because you're in the red for um. For lunch program and it's significant numbers, I'm looking at lunches last year, twenty three, twenty four school year versus this year. Average monthly last year was uh. Uh, seven thousand one hundred E two, this year it's five thousand one seventy nine. And I think the free breakfast last year, you can see this number between twenty three, twenty four school year was four thousand nine hundred and seventy three breakfasts. And this year, it's one thousand seven hundred and forty threes, it's a huge drop.
If if people ha- if the community members have thoughts around why you're not having your students eat breakfast and lunches at school. Please reach out to us because we need this information. And if you potentially can apply for free or reduced lunch, apply, because that's important. Every student is fed no matter what, every student is fed no matter what. But if you could potentially um fall in the range, then apply, because it's only going to help you and it is completely confidential. We do not know anything about it, there's only one person who knows and that is it.
Yeah, that's, I was gonna say another thing, cause I talked about like when we were kids or like even past generations that like. People were like, they've said to me, do they have a different card? Everyone has the same stuff, so like even the lunch staff doesn't know who's free and reduced. So, if you think you are eligible, you should apply for it.
And just quickly to mention on the nu- nutritional value of what we have, that is all like regulated through a s- the state. So every meal essentially has been approved from the state level to meet state guidelines. And I know that our state is this way or that, but we are one of the privileged states who have the funding. And the people in charge have actually put effort into our schools. So, I don't think that that's necessarily. The most important place to put our effort into, because we can, I mean, there's. We were talking about earlier, like. We're involved in a program through the state to get extra funding for our food program. Because we meet the high bar criteria, which let me, is not a high bar, but.
Yeah, it's high, it's a process.
We meet a certain level, right, it's a.
It's a.
Oh, like.
Yeah, it's a process.
Level, it's all like the bare minimum, like we're doing the best that we can of the bare minimums.
Yeah, it does, it needs to be, in my opinion and some other boardroom training, it needs to be looked at and hopefully, I'm crossing my fingers for efficiency over time, because if you look at the menus
Yes.
then there's funding, like it's.
Okay, there's motion and a second, any further discussion?
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. It's isn't it federally done?
It's. It's USDA.
It's federally, it's not state, right? Yeah, it's USDA.
Um, it comes from the USDA and then the state has even more rules.
Right, so I'm saying it's it's really hard for costs to change, when it has like federal guidelines against state guidelines.
Because we can't even, like say we wanted to buy carrots from like a local farmer to put carrots on the plates for kids, we can't do that.
There are, there's there's farm to table.
Okay, so carrots is a bad that example?
The table does, yes, carrots was a really healthy option.
Say we wanted to like get like apple juice boxes.
Correct, apple juice boxes.
Sorry. Apple juice boxes, I I didn't mean to like.
Yeah. Depends on the amount of sugar.
Yeah, right.
Okay, any questions for business and play, budget?
No. Uh.
Last meeting before the budget.
You should all vote on Tuesday, May twenty seventh.
Um, personal and negotiations.
We did not meet.
And you will be setting up a summer calendar, because you do have things coming up, correct?
Yes, yes, we will be setting up a summer calendar, again, the whole summer.
Would you be having that available in by June?
Yes. Yes.
Fantastic. Okay, we're beginning in June.
We're beginning in June.
Alright, um, capital improvements.
Not met.
Leroy.
Who we met, this was a long meeting, avoid. Um, so I'm I'm gonna give you the highlights, uh, we met on May eighth and the bulk of the meeting was updates on grants and budget planning process. Um, we have talked about school restructuring, uh, regional partnerships and a whole bunch of operational matters. One of them that stuck out to me was the cybersecurity incident, that they um they had a cyber attack on April seventeenth and um the files that were on their on premise server were all encrypted, which is kind of scary. Uh, but they had thankfully, you know, cloud storage data, um uh their finance documents were unaffected, however, the attack did expose some confidential, but not financial personal identification information, so um they had cyber insurance that covered uh the forensics team, provided a forensics team and uh covering resources, so they were able to get everything back up and restored within ten days. But it really puts a spotlight on the importance of cybersecurity, so uh that one definitely stuck out to me. The other um key points, um aside from the the budget, the legislative updates, they talked about uh two major sixty six inch special education bills have been uh introduced. And there is a a big concern with um special education funding in general and how it would affect um risks. And the way that they are structured, it's particularly concerning, because the bill um uh would really affect the amount of funding that they would be able to uh receive and also place caps on that funding, so really uh this is a huge concern for for learn. Um, huge concern across the board for everybody. So right now, they're actively advocating against state efforts that could cap that funding and reduce local control. Um they are highlighting remote learning, there's a remote learning project that they are looking at very carefully right now. And so stay tuned, um more information on that in the next uh few months. Um they're investing heavily in leadership development, curriculum alignment, family engagement and regional collaboration through grants and restructuring.
So, what? Any questions, Butler? Okay, bring board.
Uh, not known, and we did not meet other than the beautiful scholarship award ceremony last night. So, that was great, I'll tell you, I think it's good.
Just wonderful to see how many adults support the students, there were three students that received scholarships, two were going to Central Accounting, what's the other student? Mechanical Engineering. Okay. Okay, and then one student going to Connecticut Community College. Um, Middlesex, yeah, so it's just, yeah, it was nice to be involved and invited, and it was a beautifully planned dinner just a wonderful celebration, and also the retirement of Mrs. Peas as well, um it was just nice to be a part of that.
I'm sorry I missed that. Um, long range capital improvements committee has not met. And safety and security, we did meet today, um we spoke about um some grant opportunities and upgrading um security features um in the schools for the summer. So um, that was great, I can't say too much more outside of it, but felt very I felt really good with all the progress this meeting. Um, okay, old business, we are all set on. Is there a motion to approve the five thousand dollar grant from the Connecticut Department of Transportation in partnerships with the councils of government, government COGs for the middle school?
So moved.
Second.
Any further conversation, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Discussion and possible action on policy six one, six two, instructional resources for teachers.
Um, let me just explain this, we are um proposing an update to policy six one, six one. Um, within Cabe's setup, that basically replaces the one I'm suggesting that we delete, which is what six one, six two is. It's no longer in Cabe's core policy manual. The subject matter is addressed in the one that you're gonna be looking at to approve, it's kind of superfluous, it makes sense to just dump it, we're done.
So do we wanna dump it now before the other one is done, or do we want to?
I think it's outdated, I I think one way or another it needs to go, if you know what I mean by that.
So what is your call, deleted now? Is there a motion to eliminate policy six one, six two instructional resources for teachers?
So moved.
Sorry.
Any further discussion?
I got a question, so what you're, are you replacing it with?
Six one, six two.
Six one, six one.
Six one, six one.
Oh, six one, six one. Okay.
Uh, excuse me, looking at the wrong thing, my apologies. Six one, six one, six one, six two is the one we're deleting.
And six one, six one is under C?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
Thanks for catching me, Kara.
Okay. Just motion and a second, any further discussion or questions? Terry, you all set?
Set, sorry.
Sure, no, don't be sorry, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, discussion and possible action on the following policies for first reading, policy three, four, five, zero, money in schools. Do I mean read all of them, or you want to do one at a time?
Um, that's such what folks want, I don't have to speak about any of them unless people have converse, you know, questions.
Only one at a time.
I will tell you in the first one, um, it just requires that um when money gets collected, they go to Liberty Bank and do a night drop. And you don't need to have a card just to pay regular deposits, so.
Okay, policy six one, four, zero, curriculum?
Just updating policy for curriculum, uh, it goes with what I was saying before about a lot of policy a lot of it was just ignored, and and state law was ignored in the past, and then on top of that, what we have was outdated. So this brings it more current and puts in some strictures to try and keep things moving properly.
Policy six one, six one?
Um, basically similar.
Okay, policy six one, six two point five one, survey students?
Uh, that was one that Dr. DeBrito asked us to look at, there are policies that govern how kids can be surveyed and under one of conditions, and this is updating it.
And policy six one, five, nine?
Uh, same thing, but different subject matter, this has to do with IEPs, special education.
And I will just say that Terry had a very heavy hand in re- updating that, so I'm gonna spend. Don through, a lot.
Is there, is there a motion to accept policy three, four, five, zero, six, one, four, zero, six, one, six, one, six, one, six, two point five, one, six, one, five, nine, five, nine as first read?
So moved.
Sir, second?
Second.
Any further discussion, all in favor?
I'm sorry, I just had a quick.
Oh, ooh, ooh.
Oh, sorry.
Uh, the money in school buildings, sometimes they hold money for certain things for PTO in the office.
PTO is not involved, I already looked into it, PTO is a separate organization, this is just like the high school plays, where the high school collects money?
But if the money is held in the office for PTO, that's not liable?
It, if it's more than a hundred dollars, they can't hold it i- in the building, it has to be put in the bank.
Even if it's PTO, because that's a five hundred.
Well, PTO is a different organization, we have no authority for it.
So if it's PTO money, then it's up to the PTO to de- to designate where they're putting their money, the schools can't hold it, but they're not liable.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not often, but never.
Yeah, this is only student activity funds and and stuff like that, this is, we have no jurisdiction for them or for the athletic boosters.
Okay.
Doesn't do anything, nothing to do with us.
Okay, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Acceptance of consent agenda, one, two, ten, we're almost there, guys. Um, warrant twenty twenty five for March, policy five, one, one, four. Policy zero, five, two, one point three, policy five, one, four, four point one. Acceptance of the following resignation, Dave, um, I'm gonna spell it, say his name wrong, Kraszewski, thank you, I'm really tired, Kraszewski. Um, Jennifer Garden, Meg Luteri, what? Branton, I'm sorry, I'm getting really tired, I've been up since four. Um, Alyssa Latonya, Latonya and Cindy Houston. Is there a motion to approve consent agendas one, three, ten?
So moved. One through five.
Oh, one through five, I'm I'm sorry, guys, I'm like really thinking fast here, one through five.
So moved. So moved.
Any further discussion?
I have something to say, um, so speaking for myself, yes, I am a board member, but I am also a parent and volunteer in the schools and communities so I am clearly speaking for just myself, I am not speaking for the board, any other members of the board.
Okay, you're at board table, you have speaker's door number.
To get, how can I speak on this?
Speak on what?
Can I go over there?
Speak on what?
The resignation, the acceptance of the following resignations.
I, if there are personal issues, you cannot.
No, it's it's not negative, I'm not arguing, I just want to say my feelings without naming any names or making any blame. And I just, I just want to be heard, so I can step down from the table and be an audience of citizens.
Well, we don't have audience of citizens per se.
Because I didn't, I didn't vote for that.
But we don't, but the board voted, there is no audience of citizens per se.
Okay, then I am speaking for myself as a board of ed member.
I am just be careful that I might have to shut you down if
Devis? That's fine.
in this is based on with attorney, let me let me finish.
I respect that, I respect that.
Be advised that any comments or concerns involve in involving individual staff members or any personnel matters which may identify employees by name or implication are strictly prohibited. And the Board of Education will need to close comments on that.
I hear you clearly, I will accept interruption and pause when needed, I will not talk over you. Um, I am um saddened by the resignations of some staff members um that have changed the lives of many students in our district. Um, I am curious about the uh what feels to me like the sudden number of resignations, some we knew were coming, some we don't. Um, and my one question, which I understand probably cannot be answered now, but for myself, I'm wondering do we do exit interviews, do we offer exit interviews? And who conducts them, and is that something that the board could be included on the results of?
And that's a perfect comment, that's fine, it's not, that, I just, I have to be very careful based on the attorney.
Okay. No, I understand, I cross a lot off.
Alright, so um exit interviews is something that we've talked about before, and I I would like to see them as well. Uh, maybe at the end of the year, we could do everybody? Human resources for doing, so.
No, that's why I was gonna make a comment as well, like and this town desperately, desperately needs somebody in human resources could be shared between the board of ed and the town side.
Aye.
Rere, can you say it again, I couldn't hear you.
I said that this town desperately needs someone in human resources, we should, like a shared service position between the board of ed side and the town side, we really need some uh human resource expert in this town.
Aye.
So, so for exit don't have human resources, that's who would be conducting them?
Agreed.
How can we have exit? Have that happen if we don't have human resources, like where would, could we reallocate that to? Because I think it's important for it's you to know and us to know why staff are deciding to resign. Whether they're retiring or going on to another job or a conflict, I don't know, maybe they just don't like it. Maybe they love it and they can't do that, I don't know, I'm just saying like we need the opportunity to hear feedback, so we as a board can support you and we can work on keeping staff.
So we have to send out an exit survey for certified folks when they leave.
Oh, okay.
And they are vo- like voluntarily, they can return the survey.
And then what happens?
I don't see why.
I can theory.
Yeah, we would look at it, it depends.
No, not a theory, she's saying she has some received one.
Okay, but she would get one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because she did, she was asking.
Oh, that's true.
I can give you.
And what would happen is the question.
Oh.
It depends on what, we would just take that, that's supposed to help us to make better decisions for onboarding for whatever trainings, whatever it is, I I wouldn't know unless I had a question.
I know, I'm asking the question that you don't actually have any, I was curious how it all works.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Just for the record, if if I'm understanding things correctly, um, that would never be anything the board was actually privy to.
I am.
It's part of superintendent's charge.
Right.
Superintendent's charge.
Correct, right.
Um.
I, yes, and.
No, and?
Our job as a board is to like hire and give feedback to a superintendent, so it's, and that's, this isn't, I'm just, again, hypothetical.
Correct.
If the superintendent is giving the exit interview, and the superintendent is getting the responses and the board's job is to hire and 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 give feedback to a superintendent but the information of what the superintendent is getting from the exit interviews is not given to us, and how are we giving a fully formed response to how the superintendent is doing?
The intent is not for the board, for evaluation superintendent. The intent of the exit interviews is to help the superintendent with hiring and retaining future staff.
So that's ju- okay, so that's just the end of the evening, okay.
It's just one of those things that's compartmentalized separately from our role.
Okay.
Our role is so limited, obviously, really is, especially when it comes to any personal issues and things like that.
Yeah.
And that's, you know? Okay, so we had a motion to begin then? We got everyone's, that's, okay. Is there a motion to invite the superintendent to a consecutive um session, discussion? Is there a motion to invite the superintendent to executive um session, discussion?
We need some votes.
Oh, to, I don't approve it.
We did, no, we did, that was the discussion we did. Question voted. Shared.
And then we have to vote after that.
But we did vote. We voted and then after you did your thing, and I think it's all in favor, am I right? Oh, you said all in favor?
No, we did not do all.
That's what it said.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Right.
Can I have a motion to go into executive session and invite the superintendent for the purpose of discussion, discussion concerning attorney, guy and privilege communication related to board's role in personnel matters?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, we are now in executive session.
Yes.
Oh yes.
Yeah.
Make me come on minutes.
Congratulations again, guys, congratulations.
Okay. Bye, congratulations.